So I will ask if I will, if I can please, to please join me in extending a warm welcome to Zach Balcom and his students enrolled in the Georgia College and State University's Early College. It is always nice to see young men and women in attendance at our meetings, and I encourage each of you to come again, and all of you are always welcome. All right, so at this time, we're going to move to our public comments, and we would recognize anyone who signed up to speak. However, there's no one signed in to speak tonight, so we're going to move right along with our agenda items. You all have received a copy of the October 25th, 2023 Council Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Is there a motion to adopt?
No.
All right, please call the law.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
October 25th Council Meeting Minutes are approved. Since we have such a full agenda tonight, I'm not going to really hold us with any comments, but I do want to send a shout out. I received an excellent report, and I forgot to mention it to you, Mr. Griffith, but I did call Charlotte in our water department this morning to share with her that a customer said that she gave him outstanding services, and he really appreciated her and appreciate the city of Millageville for having such fine employees. So I want to congratulate her and her staff for doing such a fine job. With that, I will not hold General Caldwell and the Lieutenant. We always look forward to learning how much these students have grown this year, and here, young guys are being guided by outstanding education.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for giving us this opportunity. The four of us will talk tonight. I'm just going to provide the big picture, and then each of them will talk in the individual area, if that's all right. First thing I just want to do is I just go back to our mission statement. We just had the opportunity to meet with the Chairman of our Board Trustees this afternoon again, and again, one of the things we talked about, this literally drives everything we do at Georgia Military College. It's an approved statement by the Board, the modification that has been made since last year when we were with you, we've been talking about it sometime, but the idea of elevating civility and respect, the last couple of words there, although always inherent in and taught to our students, we actually codified it in writing and put it into the mission statement. So there's no question that, you know, civil discourse is important. It's something that we take great pride in that we do at Georgia Military College, but we wanted to make sure we're elevating this ability and respect for everyone that's out there. Sometimes that can be lost. Anyway, so again, built on our military heritage. We're not a military school, but what we are is a military-based, foundation-based school that takes the core values of due honor, love of this country of ours, to provide open opportunity for the individual growth and education. And when we say education of our students, education is far more than what some people think. It's their academic piece, and we always want to ensure that we provide the highest quality academic experience we give to each of our students, but it's the education of them as a person, their character, and their idea of servant leadership, civility, and respect, being responsible in their communities. So that's our mission statement that we have here in this town and we use with the students that attend Georgia Military College. This one here, just again, to put it in perspective, and there's three parts there, and just to talk them again, so I'm, although President of Georgia Military College, there's somebody responsible for each of the key elements of this quote-unquote "college." College consists of our K-12 program right there, and I hope we're going to ask Colonel Andy Lee to talk about that moment next and explain what's going on there, but that's one-third of the Georgia Military College, so our K-12 program. Then there's our Junior College Program. That's the bread and butter of who we are, it's the foundation upon which we are built, and again, with the main campus here in Millageville and then eight satellite locations around the state. Again, I'll ask Colonel Nelson Kraft to talk about that momentarily. And then there's the Leadership College, approved in 2014 by the General Assembly to offer our four-year Bachelor of Applied Science degree, and I'll ask Mr. Jody Yearwood to talk just a little about the Leadership College, where that's going, what it's doing. And the last piece that's a part of it there is the Leadership Institute, we'll touch on that, the foundation being this new facility that we've built, and we'll finish up here by next spring, but we started using it internally for theater and some other things already at this point. Total enrollment last year of the college, the Junior College and the Four-Year College was right at about 12,000 students across the state of Georgia, and then you see there the enrollment at the prep school, about 850. And with that, I guess the last piece is the economic impact. Again, this was done by the University of Georgia, they've got an institute there, the Paul Francis Institute, and did this study. Numbers speak for themselves, again, when you look at this community that we all live in, with Georgia College, State University being an incredibly important, vibrant part of this community, and there's also Georgia Military College, and then there's also the Central Detective College, I mean, we really are a unique entity in the middle of Georgia that offers just tremendous opportunity for any young man or woman that wants to get an education. Okay, with that, Colonel.
Thank you, Council, for having us tonight. It's always great when we can come in and tell you guys what we're doing in the prep school. I know that a lot of people know about the prep school, they're probably in the community talking more about the prep school than they do the Junior College, but there's a lot going on that you might not know about. And so one of the things that is important to note is how much we've grown in the last couple of years as far as expanding to our K-5 program. So we, you know, have been a six through twelve program. We expand leadership opportunities, we've started junior bulldogs, where we're starting them in athletics early on, they're in art, and they're in theater. We have full-on musical theater shows, just like we do in middle school and high school in our elementary program, and so we always like to...
... we also offer all of our exploratory classes for our elementary program, they are in those year-round, so they have PE, art, musical theater, STEM, and students rotate through those to really kind of start developing those interests, see what they might be interested in, so that when they get into middle school, they can be a little more specialized, and then even more so in high school. So that's what's wonderful about having a K-5 program, is we're literally able to be with kids for 13 years. They can start with us in kindergarten, and we can grow them all the way through their 12th grade year, and then they can also go on into our Junior College. So we could potentially have students for 17 years of their life on our campus. And we have our community events, we'll start with Grand Christmas next year, where we invite grandparents and family members in, we have our CHAMPES program, and we are just doing every single thing we do is with the intention of growing our students into the leaders that we expect them to be in middle school and high school and beyond. In our six through eight program, we have a full athletic program, we have our, all of our honors classes start in the middle school, so we start in sixth grade with honors, math and English, and then work up to honors science, that then feeds into our academic program in the high school. We have musical theater classes in middle school, band, computers, and art in middle school, and we're constantly collaborating between all of the grade levels. Our middle school's right there in the middle, so we have middle school students who go and work with our elementary, and then we have middle school students who will then go and work with our high school students as well, so that we can collaborate, you know, among all the students. And then in nine through 12, of course, in a high school, there's so much more to brag about because there's so many more accolades for our high school students. We have 100% graduation rate for 14 consecutive years, and our AP courses are incredible. We had, out of five of our AP courses, four of them had a 100% pass rate, and those courses were AP Bio, AP Calc, AP Stats, and AP Language. So in those four courses, every student who took the class passed the AP exam. We have a great partnership with the Junior College, we had 107 students last year participate in the dual enrollment program, and we will have about the same this year, so it's really nice the way that we work together. They can leave a first-period class at the high school and walk over and have second-period at the Junior College, and then come back in time for their next class. So there's no interruption to their academic day when they do dual enrollment. Our total enrollment this year, it's 857, but as you know, we are expanding one more time, and we will be moving into Wilder Hall School Year '24, '25, so that's August '24, and that will be our full expansion, will be full, so that will be our fourth and fifth grade building, and we'll have three sections of fourth grade and three sections of fifth grade in that building. So we're looking at about between 925, 950 students for next year, once we're fully expanded. And another unique thing about the prep school that I don't know, that a lot of people know, we have about 74% of our student body is from Baldwin County, but the other 26% does come from eight surrounding counties. So we have students driving as far as Bibb County, they come from Dublin, Hancock, Wilkinson County, so we have students from all over central Georgia. All right, and then, of course, our academics are top-notch, but we also excel in other areas. We have a total of 32 state titles over the last 10 years and two national titles, and so we are excelling in not just academics, but in that leadership and character development that students get in activities. We have literary, one-act, football, Raiders, track, cross-country, so we offer everything to our students, and they do really well. So they're academically strong, and then they're going from classes at 3:15 to 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, every night, working on being the best that they can be in whatever organization they're involved in. So again, we are one team, so now I'm going to hand it over to Colonel Nelson Kraft to talk to you about the Junior College.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thanks again for giving us the opportunity to come in and share with you tonight. Really excited about what's going on at Georgia Military College. So first and foremost, your pride and joy with the main campus right there. I'm going to go into detail with the core cadets, but really, your main campus right now is looking at about 1,200, 1,200, or 1,200 students. Our core cadets has about 250, another 250 athletes, and then the remainder is made up of some dual enrollment, our young men and women that graduated in this community and the local communities and across from the state. Want to talk, take a little bit, the bulldog up there representing our Junior College Athletic Program. It is really doing great under the leadership of Rob Manchester this year. They are completely recruiting only in the state of Georgia. So this is Georgia's Junior College Athletic Program. We really want to give an opportunity to those young men and women that might not have it to play at the next level, or they just, you know, they think they have what it takes to continue to compete on that field. We've had a lot of success recently. We, you may have seen that some of our football players that went on to Division I schools are now playing in the National Football League, actually starting this year and doing great, and we tap into that NFL resource to teach leadership to the young men that are part of our athletic program. And just something we found out here recently with our Junior College Football Program, one of our players was no kidding recruited to play at the Naval Academy. So he's weighing those options right now, but he'll be the first one that actually was recruited out of our football team to go to United States Services Academy and play. Moving on to the bottom part of the main campus there, the Georgia Public Safety Leadership Institute, just a fantastic opportunity to grow, to fill the vacancies, vacancies of law enforcement in the state of Georgia. All right, we're really trying to take law enforcement education to the next level. It's inside of our core cadets, it's an immersion of two years of leadership and character, and while the other, they wear the same uniforms, they execute the parades, they execute the physical fitness, but when the Army ROTC go off to learn how to do land navigation, our law enforcement, our public safety cadets go off and learn how to drive, you know, different driving techniques, different marksmanship techniques, and different vignettes to help build great judgment. Focus on that the first year, the second year, really focus on introducing them to law enforcement agencies in the state, and then ultimately finishing in Forsyth at the Georgia Public Safety Training Center to become a mandated officer. So really, really proud, we just started that program this year, and we're really hopeful that it really takes off after that. Last thing I really want to hit on this slide is the eight satellites. As you can see there, four are strategically aligned with military installations across the state, really trying to tap in with those military installations, not only serving the service members themselves, but also their family members. We have two satellites focused on metro Atlanta, and then the last two in Dublin and Madison are focused on rural Georgia, but those are going great as well. With the core cadets, just a couple other things to highlight as you're tracking, we produce a lot of leaders in the Georgia Army and Air National Guard, going to school here. Our Army ROTC program is flourishing. We have more national scholarship winners coming to Georgia Military College than ever before, so they compete for four-year Army ROTC scholarships, they get a two-year scholarship to us, and they're really, they're coming from all across America, descended on Millageville, as you might have saw from Parents Weekend this year, we packed up the place. Service Academy Prep, the only service academy prep program in the state of Georgia, and I would tell you, five years ago, we had 12 prepping with us to go to a service academy. Today, we have 78, and that program is going great, going to all the different service academies, and I'm happy to report, we just found out a couple days ago, that... Millageville, Georgia is producing Rhodes Scholars, so really, really proud of that. Then the last piece with regard to another cadet-type civic leader, that's really the young men and women that come to Millageville, want to be in our core cadets, they want the discipline, they want the structure, they want the character development that our core provides, but they really don't want to go in the military, so they go through all that. One of the new programs that we've tucked underneath that is our International Cadet Program. Right now, we have seven cadets from Taiwan, and they're here for two quarters, and so they're taking their classes, they're going to transfer, but they're getting that cultural immersion, and it's just a fantastic partnership that we've established with the country of Taiwan. And then moving on to the final slide, just a recap on our student population, again, we real, you know, General Caldwell kind of grades us with our transfer and our graduation rate, we're maintaining that rate above 50%, which is great. If you don't graduate from GMC, we're just as happy as if you transferred to a USG school and excel there, especially at Georgia College. As you can see, the majority of our students are minority and female, and we are federally recognized as a predominantly black institution across all the junior colleges, but, you know, it's all right there. Really excited at what's happening with our Junior College, subject to your question, I'll go ahead and hand it off to my colleague, Mr. Jody Yearwood, to talk about the Leadership College, where both General Caldwell and my son are students. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting us be with you. I want to talk to you all just a few minutes about part of GMC that you're probably not as much familiar with. Everyone knows main campus and knows GMC Prep, but I want to tell you a little bit about the Leadership College. We have the four-year arm of the college, which means the bachelor's programming that we do as a college can be obtained online through our college. Couple of key facts about us, leadership and ethics across the curriculum, so everything that the President said that we've been doing for 144 years and our mission, we take that and we do that through an online delivery and a distance model to students across the nation, right? So everything that is there, we can put that out through a virtual environment and extend that reach out and reach so many more students. We're the fastest-growing segment of the college, we've grown about 41% over the past five years, and that growth doesn't seem to be slowing down. And just so that hits home, the jobs created there, the full-time coaches, that we call them, that support these students, faculty that oversee them, that's all, that's job creation happening right here in the city of Millageville, coming from this college. You can't see us, but we're the fastest-growing part of the college. We have the four-year degrees that I talked about, the Bachelors of Applied Science, so a key feature of those that are very different from other colleges and universities is we have Bachelors of Applied Science degrees, which are specifically tailored to the military member, because it's a technical occupational bachelor's degree. What that means is our bachelor's degrees, we can transfer in probably more credits for the military prior learning than just about anybody else. So coming to us, not only do we have that heritage, we know how to support them and follow them around, and we're flexible to let them move around the country, and we let them maximize their learning credit that they've had in the military to come in and take that shit from us at a much faster pace than it would be typical in a four-year degree program. Our faculty, it's about 408 of them, employed all across the nation, and those faculty, it's a true distinguishing feature of our faculty, because all of them are trained and modeled the ethics of caring. So what that means in a very 30,000-foot view is if you don't have a heart for students that you want to teach, you know, we probably all had that experience at one point in time where you come into a classroom, and it's in the syllabus, and it's sink or swim, and you're going to, you're going to do well or you're not. That's not what we do. We meet our students where they are, and we make sure that no matter their background, no matter their learning styles, we meet them where they are, if they'll do the work, we'll get them, we will make them successful. We don't test a student, go read the syllabus, we explain to them what a syllabus says, teach them how to read it, teach them how to be cautious. Last piece of that is 24/7 student support. Those, the previous side, 6,243 or 47 students that were there, many of those students, most of those students will never set foot on our main campus, including when they graduate virtually from us. So that means from the time they decide they want to enroll with us to the time we produce a graduate, they never have to come to campus, no residency, you don't have to come here for tests and quizzes, everything we do, we meet them where they are 24/7 services. The last piece, the GMC Leadership Institute, you all have seen the building being built, I think I'm orientation right, I think it's that way, you can't miss it. We're very proud of this, we're looking forward, it's a grand building, if you haven't seen it, please do come tour. One of the things that we're going to do is we're in the initial phases of developing the Leadership Institute that will run and capitalize on that. And what that means, and I don't have more to tell you because I'm still planning it, but for what now, what that means is all the things that we do in terms of leadership and ethic development, we're going to use the Leadership Institute to deliver that to partners across the state and a non-accredited program. So everything we do academically, we're hoping to bring up through the Leadership Institute for the continuing education credits, executive leadership programs, programs for high school students, et cetera. So more to follow on that one, we're very excited about the new phase of the institution. Thank you. So short of your questions, I think I'm wrapping it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jody, we appreciate that presentation, thank you, General Caldwell and your team. Before you leave, I want to say that for most people that don't know, the City Council has a resolution for a city of civility, so we are now a city of civility, but we want everyone to know that to be kind and to be thoughtful of one another. So I like the fact that your mission statement is running along with the city's ideas for... Many of you don't know, General Caldwell has just made his 10-year anniversary and successfully did so, and he was penning this afternoon, I think I left it before he was penning, so let's congratulate him on that. He's got the... I'm looking for being here as a board member, I'm a board member myself, so I'm over on this side of the board tonight, but thank you for coming out with the team that's been with us tonight. Anything else?
Thank you. Shoot. General Caldwell, one of the things that I want to show, when she mentioned us becoming a city of civility, one of the things that our municipal association encouraged is that organizations and schools, if you don't have a problem adopting a similar resolution to the one that we adopted, then you can become an organization of civility as well.
So... I should give you the information. All right, so at this time, the Chair will recognize Mr. Griffith for his City Manager's Report. It's, well, we can probably get about 12 more students in here that are sitting in the hallway, Mr. Balcom, if they want to come in and have a seat.
Sir, coming in, I'll go ahead and get started, I'm going to be brief tonight, so as not to take up the time for our public hearing that we have, as well as discussion on an issue for the Millageville Housing Authority. But just to give you a couple of quick notes about some things that have happened even since I sent you all the weekly report last week, it appears that we have started the, down the road of the city's part of closure on 107 and 115 South Wayne Street, and I'm going to ask Mr. Jordan if he would let us know where we are in that, and then I can share with you what the new owners of the building have shared with me even just today.
Well, it has closed, the property has closed, and we had agreed, as far as our participation, the city was paid, reimbursed back all the public funds that have been expended in this whole process of this nuisance abatement and covering the large part of the fencing and so forth that has had to be rented during that whole time of securing the building. So it is, it is closed, we have our money, the new owners have 60 days in which to, in essence, secure the building and get it to, get it to the point of being cleaned out and so forth. So they've assured us that they're going to be able to do that, and so that is another positive aspect. I understand that per our agreement, that they will begin picking up the expense of fencing and all as of the date of closing, so I think we're in finally good shape in that regard.
I did hear from a representative from Volant Investment Group today, and they were to pull a demo permit today, I did not get confirmation of that, but that was their plan. I still have the key to the lock on the gate, and they didn't get that today, but I anticipate they probably will at some point during the weekend. I just shared with them they could just keep that key after I gave it to them, because it was now their lock. But we're excited about that happening, as I know you all are, I'll give you just a quick trivial piece. Last week, we were paid the line of credit from Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority, and Mr. Grant brought that check to me last week, and I carried it over to Ms. Danzy, and today I carried the check over on the lean for 107 and 115 South Wayne Street, and I told her that that was twice, two weeks in a row, I'd come bearing gifts, don't count on it next week. But we are happy to get all of those things closed out and get some closure on some of those pieces that have been hanging out there. I do want to share with you something that really and truly is hot off the press, I just got the final design concepts yesterday, and I put it in your box today, but if you all will look at the Google Earth photo that looks down on part of Central City Park, you'll see the larger area up towards the top of the map, which is the five-to-12-year-old play area, and then there's a smaller area south of that, which is the... And then there's a smaller area south of that, which is the two-to-five-year-old play area. And then a rectangle area south of that, which is where some swings are. And in working with companies that have been looking at replacing the playground equipment at Central City Park, I have asked them to stay within the footprint and the square footage that we have there, and that's what they have done. So you have in the colored slide deck a concept of what those three areas could look like in Central City Park from this PlaySouth Playground Creators Group that came to us highly recommended by Falcon Engineering. And the first one on top is just an overall view. Second sheet is a closer view of the five-to-twelve play area. Third is another angle of the five-to-twelve play area. Page four is the two-to-five play area. Page five, another view of the two-to-five play area. And then page six is actually the swing area. You can see all of them have shaded seating for the folks that are there watching their children and other charges play. I know you're probably gonna be surprised to hear me say this, but I like the red and black, but there's a little bit too much red on bottom for me. So we're gonna, I'm gonna work with them to look at maybe changing the rubberized surface to something similar to the color that's in, under the swing area. But this is approximately seventy-five, seventy-six hundred total square feet of placed rubber surfacing on top of concrete and then the installation of the equipment. As we know, it's something we've been talking about for quite some time. And I think we're about ready to move on bringing a proposal to y'all at our November twenty-eighth meeting to approve a contract with PlaySouth to get this done. This is a turnkey operation. They will demo the current equipment that's there and come in and install the new equipment. The only thing that I don't have a cost on at this point in time, which we will do locally, is I don't want to put all this nice new pretty equipment down there and leave the chain link fences there. And so we're gonna look at getting that chain link fence around the area, areas replaced too. And if we can pull that down while the demo was going on on the old equipment, that will actually make installation of the new equipment go a little faster and maybe be a little bit cheaper. But I will, unless something different happens, I will anticipate bringing to you a contract to approve at the November twenty-eighth meeting to get this started and to get that equipment replaced that I believe Councilman Reynolds has told us is at least as old as he is. So.
I can assure you it was replaced right around ninety-eight or ninety-nine. I grew up on the old hot metal.
Ah, okay.
The old fire engines.
Yep.
But they changed that. It's not the time I got to middle school.
But I'm excited about that. I'm excited about having that available for the community. And I just wanted to let you all see that concept tonight. In terms of things that are on the agenda tonight that I just want to make mention of, Resolution R. twenty-three eleven forty-three is a resolution to authorize the Fifth Amendment to the Agreement with, within the contract, is called Georgia Waste Systems LLC. But it's actually our contract with Waste Management. If you all remember when we had our call meeting to propose the millage rate that we'll be discussing during our hearing tonight, I recommended that we go with that, that Fifth Amendment to the Agreement because we were getting that with no increase in cost. And I thought that was important for us to have in 2024. We will have to do an RFP in 2024 for that contract beginning in 2025, January one, twenty twenty-five. And we will do that. But this gives us the additional year, which is the last amendment to the contract that we have at the same price that we had for last year, which is anytime we can be guaranteed of what our cost is gonna be, that makes budgeting obviously much more helpful. I mentioned to you all in our weekly report that we need to have a discussion about the land bank appointees. You all have made those appointees, but according to the Land Bank IGA, two of those will be appointed to two-year terms and two will be appointed to four-year terms. So if you all could let me know who are four-year appointments and who are two-year appointments, then we can get the letters out to those appointments and a copy of the Land Bank IGA in the letter that we send them to let them know that they have been appointed. Mr. Jordan, I think you have a resolution to discuss with them.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Reynolds had requested sometime back that we consider a method, or you consider a method by which we can approve alcohol renewal applications en masse as an exhibit to a resolution as opposed to the clerk having to go down our, a list and read them out. And as you know, we have done for, ever since I've been on City Council. We used to not do them en masse. We actually, because of certain council person that wanted not to vote on any alcohol applications, we used to do them one by one. Council, I don't know how long ago, decided we were gonna do them. We could at least vote on them en masse unless you, any council member objected to doing that as a matter of privilege. This resolution, which could be used tonight if you so choose, this resolution basically allows the list that the clerk prepares to be attached as an exhibit. And then you vote one time on the resolution. The clerk does not have to read each individual renewal. This is for renewals only. It's not for new applications. And it still would hold as a matter of privilege that if you decide, any one of you decided that you wanted to pull out a particular renewal and vote on it separately, for whatever reason, that would be done. So nothing changes other than the clerk does not have to read individual renewal applications in this process. And you know, beginning now, I think we actually started last, last meeting, those renewals, because they're for 2024, those renewals and applications are starting to come in. And we'll see more and more of them over the next few weeks. Actually, I've started earlier, and that's probably because there's been a great emphasis made that these applications have to be in, the ordinance says they have to be in by December the tenth. And so that has not always been the ironclad rule. And we've had meetings that have had to occur the last day, the last two days of the year. And so hopefully, this will simply expedite the process of approving these licenses.
Jimmy, just a quick point of clarification. So this resolution would be included with every batch of licenses that come in, but it will be the same resolution, just a different exhibit?
The same resolution, just a different resolution number.
Thank you.
If you chose to do it tonight, we would simply be attaching, we have the list from the clerk. I assume it's there and been added to it. You could, we could mark that as Exhibit A in this resolution tonight because renewal appointments are already on, approval is already on the agenda. Correct. We would read the caption of this resolution. It's gonna have attached to it Exhibit A. That is gonna be that list that the clerk always gives us for the, for the renewals. And he would have it, going forward, he would have the resolution as part of what he has provided in our, in our board. So the list is just gonna be Exhibit A. No, you really don't have to take a vote on whether you're gonna use it or not. If you, if there is an objection to using it tonight, I think what would occur tonight would simply be that you would voice that objection. We wouldn't use it tonight. But going forward, it would be presented as a resolution. And then if someone has decided that that's not how we're gonna proceed, then we would probably have to put it to the vote going forward. But I don't really recommend that because if you don't want, if someone on council, one or more do not want to do this with the resolution, we would be much better off continuing as we are doing now because any one member of the council could seek to have each one of these voted on individually. And that would be, we would be going in the opposite direction there.
So I missed a question. Anybody have any questions or concern they want, want to?
I think it would be time to discuss it.
Does my question, does that have a resolution number?
It would be the next one, so the resolution, twenty-three eleven forty-three.
We have forty-three.
Forty-four.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, forty-four.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we don't get that, but it'll rain. Anybody else? Discussion time, so we can.
The new, new applications will always have to be done because our code of origin requires that initial. New ones.
Each meeting, the resolution will have a different number, right?
We would do, we would not do those by resolution.
No, not, not the, the new application, but for the renewals, each meeting, that, that resolution would have a new number.
Yes. And again, this resolution, as you can see, would allow any council person to exercise the privilege to pull off the list from the exhibit and to vote on an individual renewal application, et cetera, which is basically what you're doing now. You already have that privilege to do so.
Are there any other questions and no one voicing their opinion to say not use it? We're using it tonight, the alcohol renewals.
I just have one, one last piece of information on my report, Mayor, just to remind everybody. Both sent out the agenda today, but to remind everybody, the next millage rate hearing will be at a call meeting November twenty-first, a week from tonight at six P.M. So we will be back in chambers. We had to do it at six because state law requires one by hearings to be at six o'clock or after. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
So we're gonna move on with the agenda. There's no old business, so we'll move to new business. Tonight, we have a public hearing to garner public comment regarding the proposed millage rate being increased from ten-point-twelve mil to twelve-point-twelve mil on the tax levy on real and personal property assessed within the corporate limits of the City of Millersville. One mil represents forty dollars on every hundred thousand dollars of assessed value of property. Tonight is the first of the three public hearings to consider setting the millage rate for 2023. The next hearing will take place Tuesday, November twenty-first, at a call council meeting beginning at six P.M. here in the council chambers. And the third and final hearing will take place during our regular scheduled meeting on November twenty-eighth, at which time we will have the second reading of the ordinance, and it will be up for adoption. The procedure for conducting the hearing will be as follows. Chair will first determine that this public hearing has been properly advertised. The chair will ask the clerk to read the proposed ordinance by caption. The chair will then recognize anyone who wishes to speak regarding the proposed millage rate increase. And finally, anyone who wishes to speak regarding a millage rate increase is encouraged to do so. As you are recognized, I will ask that you come to the podium to make your remarks and that you give your name and address for the record. Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised? I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
Ordinance, oh, that's twenty-three eleven fifteen. An ordinance to levy and assess taxes at twelve-point-one-two mils for the support of the mayor and alderman of the City of Millersville for the 2023 tax year and to provide for the collection of the same.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak on the proposed millage rate? Next take this podium, please, sir, and then say your name and address for the record.
My name is Wesley Willholland, and if I listed every address I've got, would be here a while. I'm a landlord in this, in the city, have many properties.
For sure.
I live in another county, two seventy-eight Bull Hill Road, Haddock, Georgia. I spend roughly fifteen thousand dollars in taxes for the city every year, forty thousand for the county. So your decisions affect me maybe more than some others. I heard someone mention that we haven't had a millage increase in five years. I don't know if that's true or not, but it's kind of a, it may be true, but it's a little misleading. I know we've had two assessments in the last five years. In the last five years, property values have gone up substantially every time we've had an assessment, which puts more money in the budget for the city. So where we have not had a millage rate increase, we have had an increase of property taxes into the pocket of the city. We are currently under an assessment that we have not received our assessments yet. I'm sure that'll be February or March. So I would encourage you to maybe wait until we get those assessments before making your decisions. It's kind of a one-two punch. You hit us with a millage rate this year, and then next year you increase assessment score up another twenty or thirty percent, and it really hits us in the pocket door. A lot of times when government officials want to increase the millage rates, increase property taxes, they like to say, we've had to make the hard decision. We know it's not gonna be popular, but we've gotta do something. Well, I disagree with that statement. The easy decision is, let's just go up. Not a single person in this crowd or in this city can just go to their boss and say, I need more money. What do they have to do? And these times more than any with the inflation we're having, they have to sit down and, and I know some of my tenants have to go, I've gotta pay rent this week. I need groceries too, and eggs and bread, and don't get meat, my God, meat. It's like ten dollars a pound for ground beef now. So it's not easy for us as landlords to pass this along to a tenant. They're already having enough hard time. Rent has gone up in this town a lot in the last two years. I had never gone up on rent. I had never gone up on rent in twenty years. I've been in this business roughly twenty years. Until last year, I had to finally start going up on, on rent. I can't, I, we could not continue to absorb the inflation that is going on in this country. Um, and for, for, for y'all to increase milage rates at this time, it's not only gonna be hard on us as landlords and property owners, but our tenants, I, I don't know what, what they're gonna do. Because I have to pass it on, I can't, I have bills to pay, I can't just absorb these costs. Anyone that's owns, owns a business knows that. So my fight is really a fight for my tenants as well as for me. Um, well, I guess I just covered my entire little punch list here, so, um. Don't need to think hard and hard on this, because like I said, not a single person in this, uh, in this auditorium in this town can just go to their boss and say, give me more money. They have to budget, they have to cut in places. And I'm asking you to do that, look at, look at your budget. And I, I don't think the time to take money out of the pockets of citizens is right now, not with the current inflation. I mean, I know y'all go to Walmart, I know y'all buy groceries. I ain't gotta tell you how, how expensive it's gotten just to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to? May I come, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Ricky Giles, I live at two zero five Lake Shore Circle here in Ballin County. First, I feel a little bit mistreated. I own more property than anybody, more parcels of property than anyone in the city of Millisville. But I really have no voice, I can't vote for the mayor or any city council. All I do is get, but at least I do get to talk tonight. I agree with Mr. Millholland almost everything he said. You know, last year, in twenty twenty-two, we had a property reassessment. I know every, almost every one of my properties, if not everyone, went up in value. So I had to pay the county more, it made me have to pay the city more in twenty twenty-two. The county didn't go up this year, but there y'all saying you're gonna want to go up, so I'm gonna take a hit there. The county's already notified us, get ready for next year. They've, they've already started reassessing them for twenty twenty-four taxes. And I know we're gonna take a hard hit, because as we all know, real estate prices have gone up. But you know, I know y'all think, hey, pass it on to the property owners, they got plenty of money. They got a way to pay for it, maybe we do. But it's not fair, property taxes is the most unfair tax there has ever been. The only fair tax is the sales tax. I don't know if y'all could ever raise sale tax within the city, I don't know. But y'all's portion of the sales tax should be up, because the inflationary prices, I'm sure the same sales will be the same, will be more this year as opposed to twenty twenty-two. So you should be getting more in sales tax, you're gonna get more in property tax this year than you did the year before. And, and we already know you're gonna get more next year. Yes, I'll fight every property I got with the county, but I don't win them all, there's a lot of compromises. I'm gonna get hit hard. Last year, my county taxes went up about fifteen thousand dollars. I'm not sure how much I paid y'all more. My bill with y'all was over between twenty and thirty thousand, I forget what. But like Mr. Millholland said, we're having, I used to not raise rents, I'm raising them now. I've left people in tears this past week, telling them I'm going up January first. They said, well, we, we have to pay more for this, this, this. And I said, I can't help it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go broke taking care of someone else that's not my, that doesn't live at my house. I hate going up on them, and, and it, it hurts to do it. But at the same time, everything has gone up with us. And maybe by what y'all say, I'm sure my, my property tax with y'all, if y'all get y'all's way, it's gonna be up like four to five thousand this year, you know? Maybe that's not a ton of money, but when I go to all these other people, some of these people live in paycheck to paycheck. Also, you wouldn't believe how many people have called me in the past three or four months who are living in motels here. They've lost their house and homes. I don't know who needs to address it, but there's gonna be a much, much larger homeless situation around here. And I, my guess is they'll all fall within the city. But it, it's coming because there's not gonna ever be any affordable housing again. If somebody comes and wants to build apartments like I have, they're gonna have to get almost twice the rent that I charge, because it's just, it just costs that much more now. But anyway, I hope y'all all vote no for it, you're gonna get more money next year regardless. So please vote no for the taxes, please, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, this concludes the public hearing and first reading of ordinance O dash twenty-three eleven dash fifteen. We will continue with our new business and I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R dash twenty-three eleven dash forty-two to authorize the issue of bonds on behalf of the Millisville Housing Authority. Please read the, uh, what, resolution.
A resolution authorized the Millisville Housing Authority to serve as the bond issuer for several developers around the state of Georgia under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act.
Um, yeah, this particular point is, I'm supposed to ask for a motion to adopt this. Uh, Mr. Jordan, could I move the discussion before asking or do I just need to continue? Because I'm sure there will be some.
Probably, since we have someone here to speak to this, uh, resolution, probably at least want to have that in the future, speak before, maybe before.
So Mr. Davis?
I am, I am doing a substitute, um, Stuart Duggan, um, of course, is the one that's, uh, the bond counsel. Um, he had to attend a, uh, training up in Greensboro, so he asked me to pitch it for him. To the extent, to explain what's going on here, uh, you guys may remember, um, you had authorized the city of Millisville to issue some bonds for H D C, the Housing Development Court, to do a project at the Millisville Manor in the Washington Heights, I believe, in Washington County. That deal fell through in that they had a contract dispute about the selling or purchasing of property. So the bonds that you originally allocated to them for that deal are just sitting there. So in essence, uh, what Mr. Duggan did, um, since, um, D C A stopped issuing the tax credit, the four percent tax credit bonds, revenue bonds, we had these bonds sitting there not being used, so he went to them and proposed, uh, that these bonds be allowed to assist these, uh, six individuals with their projects. Ultimately, what happened was they had, um, cost overruns, just as we did in our project. So they, uh, Stuart made that proposal to these individuals in D C A, they said it would be a good idea. So, um, they have to meet that fifty percent, um, test that we, that we talked so much about. And so the, in essence, we, we're reallocating these bonds to their project as opposed to that original po, project that you guys had, had approved previously. That's just a, and so we just need, it's non-recourse, as, as we've discussed before, for the city of Millisville and the Millisville Housing Authority. And actually, the Millisville Housing Authority is gonna make, um, some money for, uh, the issuing of the bonds. Any questions?
Same, same thing, give a break.
Yeah, same thing, we, same thing we've done before. And Mr. Jared also, if there's no question on that, she asked me to pass out this, um, this actually PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Dorothy Bale was gonna give you on the update, uh, for the, uh, Orchard Hill Landing project. And I'll just give you this for informational purposes, uh, she was, she was out of the country, so. Any questions?
The fees that come along with the issuance of those bonds, does the housing authority have intent to go ahead and put that towards current debt service that they have in place, or?
Uh, well, ultimately, what we want, they want to do, speaking for Mr. Jared, they have twenty-seven units that need rehabbing, uh, that they currently own themselves. And they're, they're planning to use that money towards rehabbing those units. Thank you.
Their motion to adopt it this time.
Remove. Second.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mount? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster? Dr. Lee?
So the motion is adopted. I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R dash twenty-three eleven dash forty-three by caption.
Resolution authorized a one-year extension of the terms and conditions as set forth in an agreement with Georgia Ways Systems LLC.
Y'all have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If there being none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mount? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
So we don't have any new alcohol license to consider tonight, but we do have the renewals that have passed inspection so far. I'll ask the clerk to present the renewals that are ready for consideration.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to ask that, uh, we amend the agenda to insert Resolution twenty-three eleven forty-four to allow adoption of these renewals en masse.
So Mr., uh, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mount? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Motion is approved, so at this time, um, for the, uh, clerk to please read the, uh...
So this is now Resolution R twenty-three eleven dash forty-four. A resolution to approve the alcohol license renewal applications as set forth on the attached Exhibit A for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. And I'll attach it to this.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, move, we approve. Second.
Now clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mount? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Uh, I'm sorry, and Dr. Lee?
So this time,
Yes, ma'am. So, so from this point forward, the alcohol company has a resolution.
Next, we have four reappointments to make to the Housing Authority Board tonight. All of these members have agreed and, um, are willing to serve. I nominate Dexter Ricks for reappointment to the Millisville Housing Authority. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
Second.
Any discussion?
So the next person that I'll be nominating is Bonetta Martin for reappointment to the Millisville Housing Authority. Ms. Hope. The next one is Ms. Hope Waller for reappointment. And the final one is Mr. Randy Clark for reappointment as resident commissioner on the Housing Authority Board. Any discussion on any of those? Is there a need, uh, for us to go into closed session tonight?
Nothing.
All right, this, uh, concludes our agenda tonight. Uh, is there anyone on council that has comments or announcements? I would like to say please keep Ms. Walden and Mr. Wade in your prayers and keep General Boylan's family in your prayers, um. General Boylan passed on Saturday or Sunday, if that you passed, and I'll shoot the services for when they will be held, who was a long-time, um, general that joined the military college.
Also, Mayor, if you will, uh, keep, uh, Ms. Carrie Lester, our, our custodian here at the city, uh, in your prayers, her daughter-in-law, um, passed away over the years.
And the services are?
Thirsty, victory, baptist, I believe, too, but I'll send that out for sure.
Are there any other comments or questions to be concerned?
There be? Yes, sir.
One comment that was, uh, we watched the Georgia Bulldogs this past Saturday. Uh, our Millisville resident, Javon Bullard, made his second interception of the season. And I just, I just get more proud of that young man every time I see him, every time he talks. He is such a good leader and we are really proud of him here in Millisville. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I appreciate that, because I went to my bus in Washington. Okay, um, so there's no other questions or concerns, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Right, please call the roll.